So, a couple of minutes. Do you move?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, I can call the meeting over at seven thirty, six thirty, five, okay? And, the first item we had on the agenda actually has been canceled. That was a joint meeting with not a core of the Board of Health, but some of the members. That's been canceled. We are now moving right into open time for the public. Public?
I came for the regional health meeting. Has the Board of Health taken a vote on, you know?
To my knowledge, they have not taken a formal vote on whether or not they would participate in the district incentive grant, or the DIG as it's called. I am aware that West Hampton voted it no. West Hampton voted yes, and East Hampton is thinking about it. That's my awareness.
So, the Board of Health meeting next week?
On the twenty-seventh, no, that's not in their agenda. It's not.
So...
I don't know, I don't set their agenda. It just sucks, I don't know.
So, we don't know what the status is yet, except they seem, they appear not to be interested.
Right. That's my understanding.
No formal notification.
Right.
We've got two things to file, may, under, for the good of the union, for open time for the public. Number one is, I've heard that a lot of the secretaries in here were cold, and they were using small unit heaters, electric heaters, and the building was not designed for those heaters.
Mm-hmm.
The building wiring will not be able to take that because it takes so much wattage. I understand there was a problem with the heat, and, Reg, is it ratified?
It's ratified.
Okay, so, I would like to make a motion that no electric heaters or supplementary heaters are allowed in the town hall. That's only gonna blow the circuits, they're not rated for it, and they're not supposed to be rated for it.
Okay, and you obviously have the qualifications to understand that. We have a motion made then to prohibit the use of, or bringing supplemental electric heaters into the town hall. Do you have a...
An opinion on it?
Building wiring is not rated for it, period.
I know, I know, I just feel bad for them.
It's not supposed to be.
I know, look, we don't want a fire, so I'll say.
If I may, if I may, from what I understand, the heating system has been corrected, it's been recalibrated, reset, da-da-da, and they should be warm enough, but if sixty-eight or so is not warm enough, then they should wear more clothes if they're just cold-natured people. I don't know how else to put it diplomatically, which I'm not.
No, they're talking about unit heaters in different offices, and he's saying it can be dangerous because the electrical system can't take all of those different heaters in different offices.
A long way to go for a shot.
Just may I have it or not?
Yeah, please do, but I can repeat.
I'll take that. Mike, what I did is, we have a problem in the town hall. Some of the secretaries were cold, perhaps because the heating system was not working properly, or set at the proper temperature, and they're blowing circuit breakers because the building wiring is not rated for that, nor is it supposed to be. So, I made the motion that we were to put out a directive to everyone, there would be no supplementary electric heat allowed in the town hall, because the building wiring system is not rated for it, nor is it supposed to be.
Sounds like a reasonable plan.
Okay?
When the motion was seconded, is there any further discussion?
We're gonna, well, before we go on, are we gonna be able to get the computer system fixed to run the thing right?
Yes, we will try.
Okay. No further discussion?
There won't be good heat eventually.
Yes, the heat should be set at sixty-eight, I believe.
When they, when SNE came back in, they reset, when that brain was fried, they reset everything, so all the temperatures were all off.
Thanks. I got one.
So, does anybody know generally what's out there for building standards? For public buildings, is sixty-eight the temperature?
I would think so.
If I may say one thing, some of the rooms have higher ceilings, which I put the temperature a little higher because of, I put it to seventy-two.
Would they be better on the supplemental heat than having a fan, certainly to heat off the ceiling?
Right, but what I'm concerned with was, with the supplemental electric heat, the little heaters, the building wiring is not rated for it, we could start, at worst-case scenario, a fire, but if it keeps blowing the breakers, it's gonna weaken the breaker, and they'll fail.
Right, but there's a root cause here, too, meaning that is the building itself in need of some other way of being heated, or heat distribution, as Michael said. I'm just offering that as...
But, we know which rooms are the problem, and what the temperature gets down to in those rooms?
I don't know what the temperature gets down to, but the rooms are the ones with the high ceilings. And I, I use heater as well.
The rooms kick down, the rooms are all programmed for when they come in, an hour before the offices are open, they kick on from a sixty mode to about sixty-six, sixty-eight mode. That can be just as one up and down either one of them, but that's by, you know, that's to keep the flow of electricity down, or power down, when you're not using it. Every single room in this complex can be operated that way off the computer. And, like, if there's no meetings here during the day, there's no reason to have it at seventy-two. So, same thing in Constellation, Constellation, and it'd be done seven days a week, so like, Saturday, Sunday, and always here, it can stay sixty all the way through.
Right.
The days that there's activities, or she knows there's meetings going in here, she can go in and bump that up for those days and bump it down when it's not.
Right, like, this room should always be down at a lower temperature until somebody's using it, then manually put it up so...
And you can manually get an hour override by pushing that button.
So, are they not manually overriding to raise their rooms to the right temperature?
They are.
And they're still saying they're cold?
Well, we just, just fixed it. That's what it's on.
All right, so, back to the narrow issue then of restricting portable electric heaters in the building. That motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion on that?
Is there a further comment? I would imagine that's against the building code anyway, to put those portable electric heaters in a building like this.
I honestly don't think it's against the building code, as long as it's got the, if it falls over, it'll turn it off, but if we're having a problem in here, and we turn the heat up to a reasonable amount, then what we're gonna have to do, I would think, is address, do we have to put fans in that go real slow to push the air down, or something of that nature that's reasonable, but not those supplemental electric heaters, because we're over, we're putting a tax on the circuit breakers, and they're gonna fail prematurely.
Okay, so again, back to that specific issue then of prohibiting heaters, is there any further discussion? Those in favor of the prohibition, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Would it be appropriate at this point to bring up, are there any changes that need to be made into this building with respect to the current heating system and the way heat is distributed, or, and/or do we need to see what's happened with the result of the brain being fixed?
Okay, as a result of the motion we just made and seconded and approved, perhaps we could monitor what's going on in each of the offices that there appears to be concerns, and we could look at the temperature that's in there, is it reasonable? If there's a high ceiling, then perhaps we could put a slow circulating fan to push the hot air down, and then we could address it like that.
Right. Because there are symptoms and causes.
Sure.
Okay, Mike.
Okay, I've got something else to find my hair. Okay. I just had the pleasure of working side-by-side with the highway department, the police department, and the fire department through this terrible tragedy we had, and it was an eye-opener. I have never seen public employees work together so well, and so hard, and so diligently. I just tip my hat off to them. These, these people, and this has been a woman, they just worked, and worked, and worked. Nobody complained, nobody cried, and it was the most wonderful thing I've ever seen in my life. And I would like to thank them publicly, on behalf of the public and the Board of Selectmen, for the great, great job they did, it was phenomenal, all way over and beyond the call of duty. Okay, and with that being said, we have a surplus, I believe, of about three hundred and eight thousand dollars?
Three hundred and eighty.
A what?
Three hundred and eighty, but that's not been verified yet.
Okay. This is what I would like to suggest. Now, if you have, I've been in business for thirty years, and I know the name of the game. If you have happy employees that you treat well, and you pay well, and you give them decent working conditions, they always wanna go over and beyond the call of duty. And when people do that, working for the town, it's the public benefits, and that's a wonderful thing. Ed Colley, or any other department head cannot go out there and monitor what all of their people are doing all the times. These people do a wonderful job. With that surplus, I would like to do, the first monies that are taken out of it, is to give the non-union people and the supervisors a two percent raise, because they just, retroactive, they only got a one percent raise because we plum run out of money before. I honestly feel in my heart, these people should be compensated fairly, and they do do a good job, and I wanna see that continue, and I wanna see the spirit continue. I, honest to God, I think it's so important that we compensate these people fairly and equitably, and, and just tell them, you're doing a wonderful job, thank you, and if we have the money, which we do, that should be the first thing we do, taking it out of the budget.
Well, I would certainly like to second what you say about the highway department and the safety folks in this town, having been born and raised here, even as a kid, I remember just, highway department for some reason in this town has just been wonderful, you know, throughout my...
Phenomenal.
That was away in the middle part of my life, but I do remember as a kid, that just, they plowed day and night, in the winter time, obviously, and just all sorts, just constantly working, so there's been that wonderful tradition in this town. That said, from my perspective, we have a, we're actually beginning the budget season now, and as you may recall from the Saturday meeting, we also will be looking at some specific costs related to this tragedy, this disaster that we just had, and are still actually cleaning up from. So, one thing might be to consider, while that certainly is a high priority, is also we have to pay the overtime and most of those things as well. Given that we're beginning with the budget season, that might be a good message to send out to the department heads who present their budgets to us.
Well, I, I have a ballpark of what it's gonna cost to do this, give them retroactive and carry it through, and it's gonna be in the vicinity of, in the vicinity of twenty thousand dollars. I, I think we must reward our employees because they do a good job. I come in here all the time, now that I'm retired, and it's work, 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 and sit and serve the public, and they all do a wonderful job. I think that should be the first twenty thousand that's taken out of that three hundred and eighty, to pay these people, to pay them retroactive, and I'd like to make it a motion right now. And that is for all the supervisors, that got one percent instead of three, like everybody else, and all the non-union workers, that got one percent instead of three. I would like to make that a motion, ladies and gentlemen.
That would be retroactive to what month?
From the time we negotiated with them, when the devil was out.
July, pardon? Is it July, July first?
Okay. What happened to them, they were in the, I was in the Army, and when we were out in the field, they would have a mess tent, and if there was three hundred people leading, this might be a poor example, this is the way it is. The last guys in line always got just the gravy, and they didn't get the meat and the potatoes. That's just the way it is, and that's what happened to the non-union employees and supervisor. So, I'm a firm believer, if you treat your help good, you pay them fairly, you can demand the best.
Doug, while you're thinking about this, the highway department's gonna be unionized, so those guys aren't gonna get anything.
They've already gotten theirs.
Right. The only ones that I would think we're talking about are fire department, and...
Secretaries.
Secretaries.
And the department heads.
And department heads, police department be unionized, so they wouldn't be. The other question is, I don't know whether we can take and do that, since those budgets were line items passed at a town meeting. So, before you do that, I think you gotta ask the question of town council, whether we can do it.
We did it last year.
I, I just...
We did it last year, remember, we took a zero, and when three clashes declared it was a three percent retroactive.
Yeah.
Well, we did that at town meeting, December fourteenth.
We did that around December.
Yeah, we did it at a town meeting, town meeting vote.
You have to do it at a town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah, we don't have the authority to vote.
You can't, you can't allocate one without a town meeting.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so, based on our meeting last Saturday, as in my conversation about also this upcoming bill, we've pretty well considered we're gonna need a December meeting, you know, this year again, a special town meeting, which will treat the costs, and which, at that point, we could certainly bring that up as a warrant.
Yeah, I would appreciate that very much, I think they deserve it.
Okay.
That's it, thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, moving on then, approval of minutes, nothing at this time, signatures payroll warrant, P twelve nineteen, I'll just read it, the amount of two hundred forty-five thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Bear in mind that this actually represents the conversation we had and voted on last Saturday with respect to people being allowed to make up the time, so this was actually submitted yesterday, this payroll warrant.
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so much for that. The bill mark, W twelve dash eighteen, nine hundred sixteen thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Need to find where we need to sign.
Can you have it over there, Mike?
No, I think we, this is the signature page, or signature.
This is the treasury mark, so that's the bill, okay. Here's the payroll. Next thing up then is PCFs and PRFs, nothing, when no one day licenses, you might get to your meeting. Moving all the way down to interim town administrators' report.
The only thing I have is, I had a brief conversation with Bob Blanchett from the finance committee, and they have a couple members here who are looking for direction, next, the meeting of the fifteenth is gonna be a department head, possibly all board meeting, and they're looking for direction from the select board as to the budget. What, are you expecting a level funded budget, or, from the department heads and the boards and committees, are you, what is your expectations? Just something to think about for the meeting of the fifteenth.
Okay, thank you, Reg. If I could back up for a little bit, there's actually two payroll warrants, another one that I did not read out, and it's not on the agenda, but I'll read it out here, it's in the amount of two thousand eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for general highway wages.
Motion to approve?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? We have two, but, okay. Gee, other business, upcoming events and meetings, of course, November fifteenth, which is all department heads meeting, and we will be talking about, obviously, upcoming budget season. And John, you weren't here on Saturday, but did you see the printouts of the estimated free cash?
We looked at them upstairs, we were waiting for our third member, he was running a little late, so, we saw that. One question, and I wasn't able to ask, Dave, but at our last meeting, I mentioned, you'll see it when we're approved today, we're looking for the monthly statements within X amount of days after the end of the month. Was that discussed with the committee?
No, it wasn't, not last Saturday, to my recollection, I was here, and I don't recall any conversation like that. Basically, it was, David went over the revenues and expenses, lying by line.
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know, I think, I might get mine every two weeks. Well, our, our understanding is that, and I think it was with you, that you're getting them directly from maybe his assistant, I'm getting from his assistant, or what I'm looking for, I'll look at, so, it's available, we're, I understand why we can't get it, so, is there any issue with us talking to his assistant, and she's pushing off because they're at the, they're at the pushover button, honestly?
Not that I'm aware of, but as you know, we're taking a look at our ability to prepare financial reports in a timely and accurate way, so that's one of the things that we'll certainly...
I think they've elevated their, and, you know, you know, it was back for Dave, but I think Dave's a perfectionist, and he doesn't wanna reduce him to the, but, the same thing, and, and, we need to do this.
See, I'll have, like, the regular budget, have the beginning line item, parental induction, of my two hundred price, haven't been, the company has proposed, some new expenditure purposes, whatever spent on it is negative, because the money itself hasn't been, because all of the only two I can say is solid, more often.
It'd give us a lot better idea of what it is, than what I'm, my basis, because now, we're four months into it, we're, we've gotta get some budget information ready for next week.
John, I said something to Joyce, and, and I don't know how they're asked for, but she thought they were being asked for a different type than what they had. It was always that expensive before, it's from the first payroll and the first warrant, it was always there. We just want the expense to run to, about that, you know, once you, you say it's a long year, a long year. If you say, I just think maybe they thought they were looking for a balanced budget, that electricity, another balanced budget, a budget that was finalized for...
The year, fiscal eleven? No, we wanted, we wanted the year and fiscal eleven, but we also wanted the month end reports for the current fiscal, so...
I know, I don't know why you can't do it.
Well, that's what I heard.
Okay, well, we'll look into that and see what's going on, okay?
The year isn't that perfect, it gives us, you know, it's like a balance sheet, at that point in time, we'll know where, wherever it is.
Okay, so if they're not balanced, that's okay. All right. Did you have any?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, so, moving on, then, that brings us to, 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 to. At some point, we're gonna need to bring up also our grand opening.
Good thinking.
Reopening.
I know, let's be prepared for it, though, let's gas all the snow trucks.
I think that July fourth would be a good time.
True enough. Okay, meeting remained, that's fine, and the twenty-nine, so now we have, under action list, proposed resolution of age nineteen seventy-two, House nineteen seventy-two, and that is, I'm assuming, in here, Southern City Clerk, it's an act regulating election primaries, so in your package here is the executive summary. Lyndon, does Derek have any comments or anything? I just, okay, you're all set? So, basically, for people here, again, this, what this does is, and we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, not Saturday, it's the previous, it moves the state primary to the first Tuesday in June. My understanding is, it says in the second paragraph, it saves the state about eight million dollars. It costs us about eleven hundred to hold a vote here?
Quite a lot.
Yeah, Woburn paid fourteen hundred dollars for the September primary, and thirteen hundred for the November general election, you need police and trucks, and, pretty expensive.
So, each town has to, has to say, now therefore be resolved by the...
Well, it's...
It's an act by the legislature, you're sending your support for that act.
Right.
Make the motion to support it.
Do we have a second for this motion?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to support House nineteen seventy-two, an act regulating election primaries, the intent would be to move the presidential primary to the first Tuesday in June, and the state primary as well to the first Tuesday in June. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
You gotta, um, what do they want, they want this signed, or they want...
Yeah, I'm looking at that, just to see.
There's a resolve here, I don't have a signature line for it.
Chair, yes, there, oh, that's contract amendment.
There's a, there's a page here, but there's no signature on it for just resolution.
Right, I see that. Now, we got that, now therefore be resolved by the, so what we can do, we can, I'll sign this one.
I would suggest that we, I don't know whether it requires one or all five, so there's no signature line, we got all five, there's room on the bottom for five of us to sign.
Right, because it says by the, and we can say select board, and then, okay. Do you need a blue pen for this?
Blue. You got it all, you know?
I got the blue.
There was a time when attorneys got paid by the words that they, that they drafted.
Your own words?
Yes.
Before you go off that, that list, Jester, is a PVPC.
Right, I see that.
I didn't see it on the...
The two thousand something, twenty-one thousand, excuse me.
It was nineteen, add two thousand forty-five, it is now twenty-one forty-five.
Right, and you're concerned at one point was, how is this paid for?
Yeah, we found that out the last time, didn't we?
Right, we found out that it, we, it said here, said improvements are funded by a deferred payment loan from the South Hampton Community Development Program, to which we don't contribute anything.
But we need to sign this.
Right, we need to approve it.
While you're on the signature page.
So, we need a motion to... Some more?
Second.
Favor? Pass that over to Reggie.
Um, Jess, you didn't take this, is it all right if I...
Oh, yeah, please do. Okay.
Jesse, you gotta sign the second page if you want.
Appointments here we have, to the Conservation Commission.
I just passed it to Reggie, I just sit here and blank.
I think the other pages, they're just giving me the signed pages, so I don't know what I'm doing.
Okay, appointments to the Conservation Commission.
Marla Hanks is enough.
Marla Hanks, we had spoken...
Who has already been on there once, and is good enough to come back again, so I will move to appoint Marla. But wait a minute, doesn't Conservation have to be here?
They came in and told us that they approached her.
I'll second that.
Where's her name? Love it in the back.
So, I'm moving. Okay, it's been moved, we have a second, to appoint Marla Hanks to the Conservation Commission.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have two for the Greenway Acquisition and Design, or GAD, also known as EGAD, but, anyway, the two, I'm gonna recuse, that's pretty funny.
How many positions do we have left open?
Two.
So, how convenient.
So, we have April West and Dark Dodd, so I'm gonna recuse myself from Dark Dodd because he's a relative.
Close.
I'll make a motion to approve both.
A second.
Well, you're, you're vice chairman, so you gotta call the vote. I'll move to appoint both.
You're a second?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
The acting chair votes yes.
I recused myself, okay, wonderful. And you might recall from our last meeting when we were all here, I'd put together this draft of the charter for them, I'll give these copies to Reggie, I wasn't sure if they were gonna be here tonight, but Mike also made the point, and I have it here in my, remember this thing that I passed on, Mike? You made the point that one of the first things they might wanna do is, before they, we don't have a budget for them, but to see the feasibility of this with respect to bringing before town meeting, and I have that here as well.
Well, since we're gonna do it at the summer meeting, it would be ideal.
Right, absolutely.
Get a field where, special is the same, but, before we go spending a ton of money. Not, I supported holding, but, pardon.
Okay.
But, Jess, is this your, we should make it clear that this is just a suggestion, they have to do this.
Absolutely, right, because I had some folks calling up and saying, what do you want us to do?
Right.
And I said, initial charter, hold initial meeting suggested dates, you know, and then assess skills and competencies among the members and those things, and just, so, these are some ideas, but absolutely clearly, this is not a mandate on many sides, this is simply some suggestions based on my own experience in forming committees.
Right.
And at the bottom, I wrote, good luck. So, if you want one of these, or... Okay, those can go over to Reggie, you can treat those, or, goodness, you're gonna get there.
That's actually why I came. I had understood when we talked about storm and storm response, I passed up, and I looked into the web, into the statistics for during that week, and the visits to the website doubled during the week. So normally, we see a hundred unique visits per day to the website, and we saw, on average, you have two hundred for the week starting, starting on Monday. So, sort of counterintuitive, but to think about, people did have cell phones, they did have...
Smartphone.
And so when you think, and when you look at the traffic chain, the site was iPhones and it was...
iPads probably too.
I have a tab, I'm sorry.
What's that, research?
BlackBerry.
Blackberries. So those were the top two on the list. So it was, it was mobile devices that were coming to the site. So as you think about, I think I saw in the paper or something about neighborhood captains and those kinds of things.
Right.
But as you think about a community, a communication strategy, people did go to the website looking for information now, there wasn't information to give them, because there was nothing asked to give them, but should you include that in your communication plan for those types of, for those types of things?
So that was a three G signal that was coming out? Or they were picking up three G or smartphone signal?
I, I, I changed the website from my phone during that week.
Well, we had no cell phone.
I did, I also had a, I have a Galaxy Tab, which was an Android platform which works on three G and Wi-Fi, both, as, as most of those tabs and pads do.
But we could also tell where the web traffic was coming from.
That's great.
And a fair amount of it was coming, so it shows the hosts, so Charter was providing visitors, what's the name of the insurance company? Mass.
Mass Mutual.
So a lot of it was coming from Mass Mutual as well. So people that went to work on Wednesday, right? So it's not just people in the area that would be looking for information from here. So I just wanted to raise that as you...
I'm really glad you did, because I was curious, because we, as soon as we got our electricity back, Charter was online too. We couldn't turn the computers on, of course, but I was able to get channel...
That wasn't true in all of town, but a lot of people got Wednesday back, but didn't have cable service until Thursday, and then the people that I talked about, this is anecdotally based on my own experience, folks on Bummering got it back on Wednesday, some of them didn't have cable, then the folks on the other side of Bummering that did get it back on Thursday had cable at the same time.
Well, Charter's batteries were down for Wednesday.
For Wednesday, right.
The only reason I know is they didn't generate power.
Right, but to access our website, you wouldn't have to go through Charter if you're going through a phone, a smartphone.
Yeah, no.
It goes through a different circuit.
It's pretty small and you've got to pay attention, but if you, if you're making a sentence or, you know, or just editing something.
I have a set...
We did put a notice up there, I was at work, and had the manpower, so kept talking to Reggie for a couple of things out there about this, that, and the other thing, and then got a note almost instantly that, yeah, you've got to type those school starts on the fifth, and on the fourth, and the fourth, and the fourth, whatever it was.
That's great to hear.
And that actually happened from the phone, so it was possible.
Okay.
We didn't want to look at it that way, but it was possible.
Mine has a seven, eight screen, and it's pretty, I read the New York Times on it every day.
Yep.
So it works great for that, and these iPads and iTads do.
Well, just to let you know some of the difficulties we had, we only had two lines, eighty-nine-one-one for a while, and then we had to answer it for our calls to Western for three hours to be, there was no power. We were losing power and I didn't generate any. So they were in the dark there for several hours, and we had to transfer an emergency nine-one-one, which we would get as long as our lives would get any, and it did, we only had two lines coming in, the primary, police lines, and secondary recording line. That was it, there was no phones anywhere.
So how about signal?
That's another thing I wanted to mention, in that when, a long time ago, Diana talks about, and I don't know what goes on in our phone system in this building, if it was the systems that we had, whether they were moved over here or not, but I thought when we were contemplating this building, we're contemplating a phone system as well. And state of the art is voice over IP and your voicemail is, you know, thousands or hundreds of miles away from where you are, right? Not affected by the storm. And you can check those kinds of things from remote.
Well, I have VoIP at home now through Ooma, but that goes through my computer, through Charter, so I didn't have that, I only had the wireless.
But you did have, but you did have access to your voicemail at that line, whether you chose to go check the messages or not, at least somebody was collecting them, right?
Correct. Yeah, Western Mass was sending out daily updates, correct. Yeah, so you're right, they were being collected, but the phone itself, the battery died after a day, so I couldn't access them.
Yeah, no, I mean, we all had our, our store, our, point is that you can continue to collect that information rather than...
This is great, so what I'm taking away from all of this from hearing the other day too, is that there's a lot more ways of getting information out there than at least I thought of, I'm not the only person to think about these, but, but what about signal interference in the wireless? You know, some, there used to be like emergency channels, that was it, and other phones would get cut off? Is that...
Problem is, is there's all kinds of, all personal power, they have different services, right? And the problem is, is towers went down, the power peak went down, and their cars disappeared.
That, that was sort of, there was times, there was times that, you know, sitting at home, and you had to sit in a particular part of the room, near a window and the phone and stuff, but, and then other times it would say emergency home, like it just wouldn't let you through, and then sometimes you'd get a webpage, and other times you wouldn't get a webpage. But every day at three fifteen, we did get a call through the cell phone, through the connected process, to tell us about the status of schools the next day, which is another, which is another vehicle for getting the word out in the neighborhoods, should you want to do that.
Now, is that sound like too, as well as...
People register their phone lines and you...
Because it's not, there's less and less landlines than there was every year.
Sure, it's just phone number, if you have voicemail, so when, when we, to our profile of the school, we say, here's our number, here's our emergency number, here's our other emergency number, here's our emergency contact number.
Who's, who's, who's managing that?
Superintendent of schools or the, or the principal.
I couldn't get him, I couldn't get him for three days.
No, I'm not, I'm not looking backward, I'm looking forward.
I am looking forward too, you know, I'm talking about today's issue and addressing the future.
I got an idea here for that.
All I'm saying is, if you, if you wanted access to the, at least the parents of schoolchildren in town, that would have been a way to do it.
Okay, so how about this then, as a project, which we could collectively work on, is to figure out all the known ways of getting information out there electronically and electrically, both, and what do we have, and keep working on that, and who can do what, when, as part of this, you know, revamping of the comprehensive emergency management plan? Because honestly, even think of these, somebody came in on Saturday, had a battery powered radio, who was able to get channel fifty-six, WHYN, and that frankly never occurred to me that battery powered radios could pick up, of course they can, that's, you know, so, the transistor sister from the fifties, but, so anyway...
I definitely think we should be looking at some letters of that, and it's also a cost factor, having different types of phones that work for different personnel is not a key to good communications.
Correct.
I had poor communications with Western Mass, Black Creek, from day one, but I think that was, that was just the way they should handle the event. I think Western Mass did a terrible job, terrible job, because it was tops in forty-eight hours on a pickup truck, okay? I think that was our key, we were down a hundred percent by nine-thirty Saturday night, and we used to power back until...
Two thirty.
That was limited, limited, because the substation on Tulsa, like, going, and the transformer lights coming down, ah, we're knocked out. In order to get that station back up, they had to put new transmission lines, and that was part of our problem, but when they did get going, there's just a lot of questions, why certain areas of town didn't get the power as fast as they could, why they didn't, why did we have people that weren't familiar with this town, in this town? There's enough personnel, there's a lot of questions that need to be asked.
Sure.
We all have a lot to learn, and it didn't go, no, is that, I just, real smoothly, not at all. Shelters, I think shelters, there was no way we could ever have a shelter here in this type of event. First of all, because our shelters didn't have backup power, number one, that's a key thing. And that's a limited thing too, knowing where supply could be. We did, we were able to send people who wanted to go to three different shelters. Memorial, Memorial was one, Smith Falk was two. The thing about Smith Falk, people don't realize this, probably six out of ten people have pets, and they like to bring their pets with them, they will not leave them alone. And Smith Falk had that accommodation, you can bring your pets. And we also, if there was an open facility with chicken, these were regional, no, I got to think back, Smith Falk was a regional shelter set up by Red Cross, handled the area needs. I think their first night, when North Hampton was down one hundred percent, and it took in a hundred forty-one people, after North Hampton came back in, the next two days, they only handled seventy-one people. A lot of people used that facility, Ohio was down quite a bit, but came back faster. Well, Memorial was shut down, and Circus was sent to Chicago, and then that came back. But there was always another plan to go with the shelter. We would like to have a shelter here, but it didn't matter how you managed shelter when people servicing at home, they could have regional shelters, maybe Red Cross, a bunch of times. So they were manning it, but I believe, I talked into the statutes, they had a lot of twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two calls, if there were shelters, if they could go. I only know a few people who went to shelters, and they just went for a while, and then came back. As far as...
Cooley Dickinson also was taking folks in with oxygen.
Cooley Dickinson took people who had ailments, we sent two people who had, I think they were on respirators or dialysis. See, I can have a tie here, there's a lot of, we don't know this stuff. I mean, years ago, we did have a list of who was on various machines and stuff like that, that's not information readily available today, they choose to give it to us. We're hoping to do something better with Jen, establish a list of people who want to be checked on Friday, and it would be helpful.
Jackie's been working on that, I understand, as you're looking at a HIPAA letter, which is contained within the HIPAA law itself, so we don't know the specifics, but we do know that there is some situation, medical condition.
Years ago, when we set up the nine-one-one, we were able to put a history on somebody that comes in there, whether they were sickly, their age, or they, you know, they had an ailment that they wanted to know, we'd come up on screen, so you could send the officer there and tell them, they're just, these are police, you know, it could also put a whole list up there, and alert you like this, who are you going to see? But if you're working on a list like that, and we talked about it on a day at the pre-ends, I think it's a great idea, especially for police and fire, I think they should go involve being checked, and do a lot in the storm.
Right, and the other thing we were talking about is the block captain. So a person in the neighborhood that's in charge of checking on everybody in the neighborhood, and then if the cell phones aren't down, or there's a way to contact, they could contact the police just to report a problem, and if they are down, then the police would just have one person in one neighborhood to contact, to see how everybody else is. And I was thinking about having a map, I don't know whether in your department or the police, of the different areas in town where there would be a captain, and then the police or whoever's in charge of that could check off, okay, that neighborhood's good, we don't have to go there. Because I know the fire chief was going from neighbor to neighbor at one point, trying to check on people. Maybe that would alleviate all of that checking if we...
Well, no matter, I mean, I think it's a great idea, and any idea needs a lot of push, and captains change, you know, the neighbors come in, I mean, how many times have you ever briefed a police chief, he ran into people, saw off, and never even met their neighbors, they've been there for years, they don't even know who they were in that store.
Right, we had a community watch in our neighborhood, and that's exactly what it did, and now everybody knows each other, and when there's a problem, then the, the police will call one person, and that person will call everybody else in the neighborhood on the tree, and say, okay, watch out for this or that, this person could be coming up to your door, you know, to do this or that, so it kind of is a warning.
I think that's a great idea, and every neighborhood's going to have a little force to it, but you know, if it didn't work out, you know, if it didn't happen, situation, you know, if it happened next week, it happened ten years from now. This is definitely one of the worst events I've experienced, I've been here, and it happened, everybody around us at the same time, so resources like from FEMA, MILA, they were there, they were stopped out, they were used up before they got us, you know, I mean, they did have enough, and when we finally got help, you know, it worked out. But I just want to say that this event was definitely something I don't want to repeat again, but I do think the town did the most that was an A, but I don't think we came out with it, whether that be that we worked very hard, I think the idea that MICO was very slow to come in complicated our issues, and we had many fights during the whole, this was a water, I don't know, that we had a major issue Wednesday morning, we were down to eight thousand gallons of water for six thousand people. And there's some issues where they wanted to go first, they had to do with the size of supply being sold to people, not the size of what is of good. And I won't get into that right now, there was a lot of fights and issues out of the field, and Senator Schwartz had a vote taken, had to get involved for us, and we got our water, we got our water at night hour, after four promises. And it happens, we know there's problems up there. I just want to give you an update with, I had a meeting Monday morning at nine-thirty with FEMA, MILA DOT, Federal Highway Administration, at my office. We had to do an assessment for South Hampton to trip, second half of the emergency appropriation, which is going to be one. The first declaration by the ball havoc to Obama was approved, and it's only for the first seven to twelve hours. Realized basically for the stone removal and already enough to serve the ball of the way. The second half of the assessment was Monday, and that was to collect dollar amounts, our dollar amounts for recovery. Now, this, this authorization goes county by county, not by state, or by an hour city. It goes county by county, I believe, after we went to South Hampton, South Hadley, and East Hampton, they tripped it off, just three of seventeen towns, I forget. That preparation hasn't been made, but I'm wondering if it's good for our county, and probably trip the sprint fields, in the town, in the county, that works. But that is the ball, for the ball to make another announcement for the recovery, plea to the president, and the president makes it, makes the eye, what the estimates are, if they break the thresholds, dollar amount per county, and if that happens, we're in the tomb of seventy-five percent, we burst it, twenty-five percent, we eat. On federal roads, that's what the Federal Highway Administration is in there, we do have some federally numbered groups, very strict, we can get federal aid for when we build, building can come back at ninety percent, the president versus ten. It's just a lot more paperwork and a lot more due diligence that has to be done to get that money. So with that being said, I hope something happens, otherwise, we've got a big ticket. Preliminary estimates, preliminary estimates, this road damage is all in the month, three thousand dollars.
Damage to what?
South Hampton.
South Hampton in general, no, I thought you said roads.
We, you know, road damage, it's debris removal, pre-crimming, they will pay seventy-five percent of the stone removal, so the stone removal was very expensive that day, because we couldn't block, we literally had two or three guys in front of each block chopping our way through, that's how bad it was. Between the power lines and that, it was, normally we'd do an operation for eight or nine hours, this was twenty-something hours, and many of the roads were just the path used, we'd be in power lines and trees. So we don't have that anymore. Uh, we, you know, road damage, it's debris removal, pre-criming, um, they will pay, um, seventy-five percent of the stone removal. Well, the stone removal was very expensive that day because we couldn't block, we couldn't punch our way through. We literally had two or three guys in front of each block chopping our way through, that's how bad it was. Between the power lines and that, it was, normally we'd do an operation for eight or nine hours, this was twenty-something hours, we didn't have time. And many of the roads were just a path, you saw, we'd be in power lines and trees. So we don't have that anymore, we got everything pretty much perfect. But we started last week recovering, we probably got about seven thousand cubic meters of material already collected, probably another eight or nine to go. And I gave a list out, I think you, you give-
Both streets.
Media into the webpage, post, uh, we'll pretty much speak into that. What it is, is there's half the town, we're going this week. I'm not planning on going back a second or third time. I'm picking it up with the break to the, um, curving, we're not encouraging to empty their yards out. It's understood from FEMA that there are gonna be citizens that are closer to being, we're gonna take it. There's no, we're gonna take it. Okay, the landfill is open, take rush, took your suggestion, Mike, and we didn't have passed, that was open. We took in a couple hundred, two to three from UPR, that's going down. We also shipped probably, uh, two thousand cubic yards, sorry, regardless. From next week, we're gonna start the streets. Then the third week is still there, we can go back to all our now properties, but this building has, uh, property on it, that means we clear debris, uh, cemetery, parks, uh, and school grounds. Last and third week, probably anything would be missed for us, second.
I think that list that, and it did get posted on the webpage today, it, I think it says it starts next week-
Next week.
No, it was first week this finish this week.
Says next week.
Says next week.
I was just gonna read this, when you were done, I was gonna put it out on the thing. It says during, during the week of November twelfth, the highway department. And then it lists line, road, and everything, and then the week of November nineteenth is the rest of the town.
No, those are the social updates, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
That's all right.
I'll fix it.
But now we got a lot of people. I was thinking I had another week to put mine out.
You do have another week, because we're gonna start next week.
Yeah, but it-
Those end dates are there, I think, so the date is finished.
But I was thinking, I didn't even have to start getting it around, am I?
I'll fix it, I'll fix it.
I mean, third week, we will pick up some things. But what we're finding ourselves doing is there's, people taking advantage of the situation. They're having trees removed that probably removed, they're hanging out there. Look, a major car, you're on the wheel, I'm still here, uh, we picked up two huge oak trees of some reason. You know, this chopped them down, they were in the backyard, show them on the front, we're removing them. But, you know, we know people are taking advantage of us. Uh, we're gonna work at this, this is a closed town. Not everybody's left, there are, there are people who are gonna, just to make sure the peace. Have any questions? Do you have any questions? I know a couple of you had, honestly, uh, confronted with people today, but is there any questions out there that we have, that we need to address, or you could, you know, Jackie, you had so many questions.
Right, I, I think, um, the emergency management, you know, the whole program and publicizing what it is and what we did and being a little bit more proactive and so people know. You know, because a lot of times, a gentleman came to the town hall, and he was saying, well, it's locked and there's nobody here, and I don't know what to do, and, you know, he was frustrated because he was cold, and I understand how he felt, but I guess I-
The day when the building was shot?
Yeah, the second day, he was really frustrated.
You know, I, I sympathize with him, I mean, um, but we did have communications over the fire stations running.
Right, I told him to go-
The directions of the department, right, the highway department, granted, we're all running a generator.
Right.
And as soon as we could, thank Doug, admitting issues of, uh, wiring generators and de-wiring generators and moving around, um, I mean, we were able to run the landfills all week, dispatching a generator. And we got this building because we were worried about the investment in this building. We had to warm it up to one hundred percent, we had to do some work on the building, and we did. I just wish we had a bigger and faster response from where it came out, it wouldn't have been that bad. I mean, it would have been bad, but it wouldn't have been as prolonged as it was. It was very fortunate that the days were the temperature. I mean, I think there's a question about what happens with winter. Well, we probably have the same thing, there are probably more warming costs available, probably not in Southampton, because we would have to go where our resources are. Our resources are shelters, this American Red Cross, they come in with food, the kitchen, the staff, the training staff, the volunteers, the run guys. I mean, we would like to have our own, but to be logical, and we've set up shelters three or four other times before, and the only people who come there is the police officers and the department, we gotta say, I'm gonna go because it's smooth there. We've had that before. And I'm not saying it's not bad, and we might need one, and we do have shelters. And we have shelters for various events, whether it's a mass evacuation, or, you know, like, we have a heavy snowstorm, we can't use, ignore it.
The other thing-
We gotta verify the snow load, there's all different things that go on.
The other thing is recharging of the phones, he was, he was concerned that he couldn't charge his phone, which, they had the police station, the fire station-
Fire and police for both charging phones, we had people coming to our office charging, uh, screw guns, because they're trying to go to work. You know, I mean, hey, we love them, we had the power, we love them.
Well, that's something we could put on the website, where the charging stations are.
That sounds good, always be, you know.
Yeah, correct.
You know, and then it was water fake, you know, but like I said, with water, I mean, just because of the public opinion, you gotta be very careful that, you know, when somebody turns that spigot on, you know, it could be a fire, it could be somebody in a different industry. And you can turn on that spigot and all of a sudden, it'll be what you call it, you know. You know, you just gotta, you know, you gotta be careful, um, in certain things. But people want our water for flushing. And, uh, we give a lot of water, the highway department and the police department give a lot of water, but it was for flushing and flushing. But things evolve, you know, every day, I think the first two days were like, come on, say, they were happy time, with a little monopoly, and then it got really, well-
Cold.
Because I think our, we had briefings, we had briefings, three briefings, and there was a lot of good stuff coming out of it. You know where we were at all times, we, and it's very clear that, I'm glad you took that role of pocket in the rough, so the one voice consistently stayed on that. And I think it was helpful when you get it, get in there. This is a case in point, I think maybe after this whole thing's cleaned up, before rested, I mean, rested, maybe some rest. To look at this, with the paper and pen, maybe then say, is this what we did right, is this what we did wrong? If it comes again, and we can prove upon it, you know. This tells you right now, we need to get a generator for this building.
Yeah, or the school.
We need to get a generator for highway department. We need to get a, a generator, uh, we have a generator for, for the town hall, but in the past, we were able to have that as a warming station, the second floor, you know, and then still, you can, that's the right size generator for that building, it's not right.
Well, that military one that's over at the landfill now, that one, that belongs to the fire department, I think?
Yeah, that was surplus, it was out.
So that's available for any usage?
Yeah, but soon you can give the whole building charged up, that's right.
Right, but it's a three-phase-
All it puts out is one hundred amps, that three-phase four-wire.
This is four hundred amps, or-
That's correct, yes.
We couldn't use it for well, because the well, we needed a hundred to run it, but four hundred to crank it to start it. You know, so lessons learned, but, you know, I mean, the generator sat there for a couple years. We'll do it for landfill, we'll work three days.
Yeah, thanks again to Dougie for his, we and his people for setting it up.
You know, um, you don't know, and a lot of people, you know, you heard what he did, but I saw what he did, he was out there all the time, he was, he was like a pain.
No, sir.
I don't mean to be caring, he was always looking, and he heard something, you know what somebody is. And, and that made a lot of us, a lot of people moved to him.
Right, absolutely.
I made sure everybody took showers.
He even told me at one point that one woman took a shower while he was there, and her mood changed and improved so much.
No, I was outside.
But, um, yeah, I can be a white move, you know, one or two, and just, just have a round table discussion and talk about this. And, you know, um-
While we've been sitting here, I've been thinking of all the ways, based on what John said in the beginning, of electronic and electric communication. And I've got a list here of about fifteen different pathways.
I don't know if you have texting on there, but you should, because there are, there are capabilities for getting off last text, and they take up the least amount of bandwidth, so you can sure to safely get it. Um, and, and many people, that's the way they want it.
I had email, but not texting, you're absolutely right, it takes less bandwidth to text.
Well, you know, just to elaborate on that, it seems like if this is such a thing, like, that it is, and, uh, but, and Reggie knows that. But the point is, it needs another level of assistance, not the chain of command, to be there, the full, we need a person, asking for the briefing, to put this stuff off. You know, I mean, I'm involved as a director, who was in my department, making sure all the other departments were addressing things, and well, PNC, you know that. But there's also a key thing, is that we're thinking about getting, we were getting information in, we were thinking about getting information out, it was always out there. We were trying to fight, but if we could do that simultaneously, I think we could cut down the number of calls we were getting, and, and stuff like that.
Yeah, I want to make the point, that the, the demand was there for information.
Correct.
Now, think about next time, and I'm happy to participate in that conversation.
Good, okay, great. Yeah, so I'll send you this list that I came up with just sitting here. Okay, good. All right, and thank you very much, Ed and John. Hi Dave, anything else then? Nothing, Reggie?
And would you mind if we still, with the corrections, link, list the names of the streets?
We second one.
I'm sorry.
They know we're picking a lot of people, I don't have that change.
I will, I'll change it, but for the slide board to announce, would you mind if-
Oh yeah, announce it.
Do you guys mind?
What are we, so the day-
I just made the correction where during this week-
So for somebody watching from far away?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Do you want to do this, or? Okay, so we do have a change to the schedule that's been posted on the website, this is for folks watching at home. So it says here, during the week of November the twelfth, actually that is during the week of November the seventh, which was yesterday, Monday, November the seventh. So from the, what, that means that November the twelfth is the end date of the debris from those streets that are listed as such. Make sense? Okay, and then the following week, November thirteenth through the nineteenth, the remaining streets in Southampton will be, have the brush picked up, the debris.
Well, this week is the eastern side, basically the eastern side of the town, as I remember.
Russellville, Farmer.
I guess not Russellville, it's on-
Okay, so for those folks, again, if you wanna go on the website to find your specific particular street, it will be on the website. And again, the only correction is that it's during the week of November the seventh, Monday to Friday, November the twelfth.
Yes, one point, we can repost that tomorrow with corrections if you're there.
Right, it'll be reposted.
And the, and the other point is on the website, it says that, that there would be a second pass, the initial information was that there would be a second pass, so we'll-
No, we have the second pass.
Right, so I heard that's the last one.
Well, I'm, what we're, just don't confuse the second pass, people think the second pass is, we're gonna come back another time, we can do this again, or not. What we're going to do is, in that timeframe, if we miss somebody, a cable after, we're gonna go back to those first streets and get them again, you know?
Okay, and then the permit requirements for the landfill to bring in brush?
Well, we're, we're making that-
For how long?
We're bringing brush.
Okay, all right.
Probably leave that alone till December.
Okay, all right.
When burning season comes, we'll need to start running it.
Right. All right, good.
I, I just had a question about people burning brush, because somebody's doing that in my neighborhood, and I thought that this wood, if it's burned, it's not good for you.
Yeah, I heard that last, no, I heard that this morning on TV, and I kinda do, because it's, it's wet wood, it's dry, it, it's not in season.
Right.
And, I mean, I was just telling, I heard on TV, I think it was twenty-two headed, saying that the smoke has a more, uh, has a more water to it, it stays lower, versus having, you know, more season, and it goes higher. And I'm not an expert, I just, they just said it wasn't healthy to burn it in your fireplace, you stove.
Right.
But ideal place would be Icicle side.
So should we put a warning out stating that, so that people-
We're not technical experts enough, with my own experience living around here, burning green wood, you can put soot into your chimney, it has tars and ashtrays, and get a chimney fire going.
No, you put a whole thing out, don't burn green wood in your house.
Right, that makes good sense, could we put that on the website, to not burn green wood?
Inside?
Inside.
Inside.
And outside, be careful outside, because the smoke stays lower.
Or outside, consult your fire department. Well, and it, it might be worthwhile reiterating what the burning season is, which-
Well, chief right now is-
It starts in January, Massachusetts, I don't know, you can, you know, it starts in January exactly.
January first, but he's, he said the other day that he was relaxing that during this, but I need to-
Yeah, well. He said it then, and then outside we stopped.
Okay, so let's presume then that burning season starts formally in January then?
Should we make a public statement to the media? I mean, you know, not just here, but to the newspapers and point to the-
That's a state date, the burning season is, yeah, it's a state.
Right.
So we have no exemptions here in town from the state date.
Yeah, I think, you can issue certain exemptions.
Right, but we're not-
Agricultural and all the individuals for certain reasons.
Okay, but for now, the state date for burning remains in force, in effect.
Better put down what it is.
January the first is what it says.
I believe it's first weekend in January.
Okay, I'll find that out.
Seems like he opens up for permits in like in March or something.
No, I think it does June.
Maybe it just doesn't get popular until March.
It did get popular last month.
Yeah.
Which is after the winters, it was getting cleaned up and nothing.
Put that in the, okay. Okay, anything else? Uh, we'll take a motion to dissolve, but thanks to everybody for-
If more comes across any concerns or situations than that, I'm all, you know, I'm all receptive as long as, you know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be circumstances, we'll try to work with them, you know? Um, and one of them is, and I thought the governor today, is I've got three colleagues, a couple of people, who want the highway department to come and ensure the trees in the back of their house, I think we're not gonna be able to do that. Uh, volunteer goes through the town hall, any of that, if they do something, and they get the notice out there, there might be some people who have love, and that's, and they were eligible, they were just concerned, um, that something happens over the trees in that area.
Ed, are we having any problem with guys coming in from outside and picking up the wood? Long side of the road?
There are probably, the last we probably hunted wood damage out there, you know, in my mind was, it's out of my way, because they're mostly chopped in the road, it was much better to deal with. Right now, um, I've seen people giving, I don't think there's many being arrested, but they've been told to talk to the abutters. Because that wood in front of houses is the abutters problem, where most of the abutters are.
Even though it's a town tree, the wood still goes to the abutters, is that right?
That's my prop, uh, that's what we've been doing here, and those guards could have been doing when there were people in the death. You know, these abutters just, it's just part of your house, it may be, you know, life.
So I mean, I guess the point is that if anybody wants to pick up the firewood in front of their house and keep it, God bless them and thank them.
Keep yourself out.
Keep yourself out. We don't wanna, any wood that we can get rid of is, winter, we don't have any of them.
Yeah, but we're just not one of driving up in the woods and dumping it on, and we're gonna have a, uh-
Oh, no, thank you.
The thing that I have right now, like, we're trying to work as fast as we can to get this wood off the road. We get in the storm, we have no place to deal with this wood. The roads are gonna be extremely narrow, and then winter, winter like last year, we're not gonna have two lane roads, we're gonna have single lane roads, because we can't push against the force that we're riding around. It's dangerous, and plus, it just lives in there. So we're trying to be, find ourselves against the block and get that out of here, because we expect stall in the next couple of weeks. And we need to get it out of here first.
With the second wave, we're reimbursing, can you contract people and get some of that?
No, seven, no.
I, I missed a little bit of this, please forgive me, I had to leave for a moment. Did, did you say that, the, uh, the highway department's gonna be doing curbside pickup of brush, is that what you said? Pardon?
We've been, that's why we've been stacking it all outside the road, so we can pick up some cherry picker.
Okay, now what about, some people asked me, and this might be good for the public, uh, can people go up there if the wood is on the side of the road and grab the wood for firewood?
They have to ask the property owner.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
I think they have that, like this tree across street from the old town hall, it disappeared overnight, and that was- that was the amongest tree that came out. Seagulls, we had seagulls.
Yeah.
Seagulls.
It's that bird.
It's amazing the way those termites work.
We're, we're trying hard to get this out of here in the next two and a half weeks. It's imperative, it's not just because we need to get it out of here because of the winter coming.
Okay. And again, though, Ed, we would like to thank you personally, on behalf of the select board, and it's hard.
I'm the only one, I can...
And everybody else.
Really, Doug did a good job on...
He did, he was a good one.
He only got that once, I'm saying, he did a good job telling about how all the departments work in the middle, side by side.
That was great, it really was.
I was really impressed with what I saw, and I was, I wasn't with him all the time but driving throughout, doing my thing for America, and I could see those guys, and everybody's working so hard and diligently, and it was just phenomenal.
One, one thing, I'm gonna, I know there's a guy who worked out there, who wasn't bought a cup of hot coffee, cocoa, a sandwich, citizens are great. They were, that's really...
Okay, all right. So we need a motion to dissolve...